I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Related to that meeting?
Welcome, everyone. We're gonna start off the meeting with some special recognitions, and for that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it gives me great pleasure to welcome Sidney Markadante here. She's here with her mom and dad, as well as Mr. Desto, principal of the middle school. If you remember, it was probably a couple of months or so ago when Sidney came, and she was the Project 351 ambassador for Auburn Middle School. So she's here to tell you a little bit about her experiences. And she's wearing an appropriate sweatshirt.
So, good evening. As you know, I'm Sidney Markadante, and I am this year's Project 351 ambassador. I just wanna say that it's such an honor to be chosen for this amazing opportunity. I've already had such an amazing, inspiring experience as ambassador, and I can't wait for what comes next. On January nineteenth, ambassadors launch their ambassador year. For myself, this was such an inspiring day, and it made me believe that anyone can make a difference. We started our day off at Faneuil Hall with some team building, which included games like Two Truths and a Lie and Rocket Per Scissors. This is where happiness and new friendships were made. We were able to observe WBZ TV's Lisa Hughes interviewing Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, Joanne Chang, and alumna Delisa Costa about the legacy of Coretta Scott King. After that, we listened to very inspirational speeches from Governor Baker and First Lady Lauren Baker, and they gave us our service call to action. All the ambassadors were split off into groups to go serve at different sites led by Lauren Baker. Some of these service sites included Pine Street Inn, Greater Boston Food Bank, Cradles to Crayons, McKay School, and Service Village. My group was sent to Service Village, where we made hygiene packages and made Valentine's Day cards for the Coast Guard. Some of the other groups painted murals, some made sandwiches, while others worked on assembly line sorting food. Ambassador of 2019 impacted 20,081 people in a matter of less than three hours. Just think, if everyone at AMS got involved, how many people could be impacted? After having a fun time serving, we went back to Faneuil Hall to reflect on everything that we had done. Overall, I had such an amazing launch day. The next step in my ambassador year is spring service. For our spring service project, we'll be benefiting Cradles to Crayons. Cradles to Crayons is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to ensure children living in low-income and homeless situations have the everyday essentials of the need to feel safe, warm, ready to learn, and valued. Our mission through spring service is to provide support along with everyday essentials to children in need. To help fulfill this mission, myself alongside Mr. Desto and NJHS will be running a clothing drive at AMS. I will also be running the clothing drive at Swanson Road, Bryn Mawr, and Packard Shop. We will be collecting generally-used and new kids' clothing. I've already collected over 193 items from friends and family. Leading up to spring service, I will have weekly trainings through conference calls to help aid me in running this drive. The clothing drive will take place during the weeks of March 25th through April 5th. After collections are over, I will sort the clothes and quality check them. After that, I'll bring them to a regional location. Can't wait to see what lies ahead. I just wanna say that I'm thankful for this opportunity, and thank you for your time, and I look forward to coming back and sharing more information with you. I also have a flyer that I'm giving out to the other schools and public libraries.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you. Ooh, this is cute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Do you have any questions?
I'm sure they have some comments and questions. Comments and questions from the committee?
Through the chair, I'm just extremely impressed. You're very well-composed, and, you know, it was a really thorough explanation of how you guys spent the day. And my only question about this, which is a fantastic cause, is where are the boxes gonna be? Are they gonna be all of the schools to collect the clothes?
So, two will be at AMS. One will be at Bryn Mawr, one will be at Swanson Road, and then one will be at Packard Shop.
And it's all the same time? Okay, great. Well, good luck. We will certainly be making donations from our households. Fantastic.
And if I could ask a question? Are all the students in the 351 project doing this in their home communities?
Yes.
Wow. Oh, that's gonna be great. So statewide?
Yeah.
Terrific. Thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
That's great.
Any other comments or questions?
Funny, today, just today, one of my students just told me she was in one of the Worcester schools. And so, really close by, where 25% of the kids were homeless. So, you know, I think this is gonna help really close to home. Great work.
Thank you.
Now, have you been able to get any of your friends on board with this? How's that working?
Some of my friends will help me, like, create some boxes, and they'll help me make sure, like, the drive is running smoothly during the day.
Nice. And what about the rest of the students? Are you gonna try to get them involved at all? National Honor Society or anything like that?
So, the NJHS, they're going to homeroom reps, like, during the weeks of the 25th through the 5th of April. And they'll be talking to the homerooms and kinda, like, copy it up to encourage them to bring in some items.
Great. Well, I think you make a great ambassador for our schools. You make us very proud.
Thank you.
It's people like you that make the world a better place, for real. Like Dr. McCrillis just said, 25% homeless in one school. So, if there were more people like you to help out, there'd be a lot of happy, happy people in this world. A lot of less, a lot of less suffering. Dr. Brunel, did you have anything from closing?
Congratulations. You did an outstanding job. It really was, Mr. Scobie just said, a great ambassador for the school. So, I know we'll all be helping you. Congratulations to mom and dad for raising such a nice, caring young boy. So, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mom and dad, you must be very proud.
Yes.
Mr. Desto, did you have anything? No?
Just really, I moved me very briefly, I assure you.
We've heard that before.
You shouldn't have hired an Italian principal, I suppose.
Where are the hand gestures now?
That's right. All I wanted to say is, first of all, regardless of how many mistakes I make this year, it was absolutely the right decision to choose Sidney from among very many, 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 you know, worthy students in our school. And it was a joint decision. We consulted many of the teachers and so forth, who knew the students better at that time than I did. And she's really just been, as you said, Mr. Scobie, an outstanding representative. And what's impressed me the most has been her ability to take initiative. And for an eighth-grade student to be the one who reaches out to me to initiate things, it's been quite remarkable. And I also, just while I have the opportunity, wanna say thank you to Dr. Chamberlain, Dr. Lopez, and Mrs. Stanek, who've agreed to go on, to come on board. Dr. Lopez knows Sidney. The others, I don't think do, but they were willing to help out as well. So I really think we're gonna do well. My annual St. Patrick's Day party, you can't get in the door without something for this program. So that alone is gonna, you know, gonna carry the day. So it's, I'm really proud of Sidney, and I'm really proud of the way she's represented our school and our community, and thankful for all your support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you were true to your word. You do? Okay.
Yeah, just a real... Sidney, is it shoes and clothes?
Yes.
It is, okay. In all sizes, shoes, new, is shoe?
New, or like, just...
Okay, okay. All right.
All righty, excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming in. You're welcome to take off if you'd like. Nothing exciting is gonna happen from here on out. Well, the student representatives report is pretty interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Actually, through the chair, if Mr. Desto could just make one other quick announcement. Some more exciting news that we didn't know about when we did each other.
He said one quick one, by the way.
I'm sorry.
This will be even quicker. I just wanna let you know, every year, at just about all middle schools, we run a Geography B. So all the students have a chance to take a test, and then the better, the students who score better end up in a competition. And long and the short of it is, out of our 630 students, Thomas Mallett, which is spelled M-A-I-L-L-E-T, parents of Brian and Stacy Mallett, he won out of our 630 students. So the next step is to take a test, a written test, which all the winners from all the schools in Massachusetts take. And 100 of them, the 100 highest scores, get to go to Chicopee. Normally, you wouldn't say "get to go to Chicopee", but get to go to Chicopee to compete in the state final. And so, Thomas earned the right to go and participate in the state final, which is March 29th, I believe. So, really proud of him as well, and just wanted to mention that in case I forget, in case it just kinda falls by the wayside. So, we've got an opportunity. If he does extremely well in the state final, he gets to go to Washington, DC for the national competition. So it's pretty exciting.
Wow.
We gotta get him.
What grade is he?
Thomas is in eighth grade.
Eighth grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have him in next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, great kid, great family. Yep. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Those questions are hard. I used to administer that test, so...
I did too, and I couldn't pronounce some of it. I used to practice a couple of nice people.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Desto.
Thank you.
Nice evening. Okay. I don't see any citizens to comment. Caitlin, did you have any comments? No?
She says my phone's not too interesting.
We will move on to the student representatives report. And this time, we have Ally and No Ryan.
No, he went the other way around.
Yeah.
Recently, Rockets to Rockets had a buddy dance. So, we partnered up with other Rockets to Rockets schools. It wasn't just Auburn that went. It was at Algonquin High School. I wanna say a couple of other schools I've been to too, 'cause buses piled in. But basically, what it was, was it was both unified and other students came together in a dance, almost. And it was really fun. And like, you'd think, I don't know, typical middle school dances, two people, like, the two groups of people on either side, but everybody was involved. And the face, like, this, everybody was happy. It was really fun. There was food, they liked salads, sandwiches. It was really fun. That was from, it was about, it was a long dance, too. It was from six to nine. Everybody got together. It was really cool. Rockets to Rockets is also helping out with Delia Shay's toy drive. She's a freshman, I believe, at Auburn High School this year. And through her experiences at Worcester, Boston Children's Hospital, she's raising not money, but toys to bring to the hospitals. 'Cause I know, especially her concern when she was younger, they got to choose a toy. And we've raised, like, I wanna say 500? 'Cause it was both conjoined with AHS and the middle school. So it was, that was really cool, too. And All-Town Band Concert is tomorrow. So, the high school, the middle school, and the fifth graders are gonna, there's a practice tomorrow at the school, at the Auburn High School, from 11:30 to 1:30. So everybody comes together, kinda practices the pieces. And then the concert's that night. And I know the chorus also had a concert as well yesterday. And, yeah, Rockets to Rockets is still, we're trying to get more involved, too, because, I mean, we have our club, but then, you know, there's certain people that come, there's certain people who don't. So, we're doing merch, merch. We're doing clothing, too. So there's another fundraiser going around with clothing. I don't know if it's still going on, but I know we had some good sales with it, too. But finals is this week as well for Auburn High. So, lots of testing. But new tries, that's really exciting, too, for the new classes. Yeah. And, oh, course selections, too. That should be sometime soon. But with snow days, it's been hard. So everybody's gotta pick their new classes.
Were you all right with the snow day, finally getting one?
I was okay with it. One, what was good, I liked how it was attached to the weekend, so it always made it long weekend.
Those are the best ones.
Yeah.
I'll keep that, man.
Any comments or questions for Ally and her report?
I did just have one through the chair. Is the toy drive still going on, or did they wrap that up?
Um, I wanna say it goes to the end of this week, too. I know the high school's been pushing it because we wanted to try to get to 1,000 to kind of, 'cause Mr. Hanfield had said if we got to 1,000, we could have a spree day. So I think he's pushing it to the end of this week. But I'm sure, I mean, Delia, you can bring it in anytime. I think it's Friday, though, so it's that.
Great, thanks. We'll be up there tomorrow for the band concert.
Any other questions or comments? Where's your partner, Ally? We like to check in on...
I assume he's probably studying for finals, too, because he's taking a lot of APs, I think.
Well, he's picked up the slack a little bit lately.
Maybe he's learning karate.
That's gonna be his excuse. Enjoying karate? I'm just kidding. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
It's great, as always. And you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to take off if you like.
Thank you. I gotta pick my brother up from Roddick's store.
All right. Take care.
Thanks, you guys. Have a good night.
You, too. Good luck in your finals.
Thank you.
I would now seek approval of the regular meeting minutes for February 20.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 20.
Does that a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. And we move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the first item, just wanted to highlight for you the changes in the cafeteria workers' contract. They did take a vote. It was a very quick and very amicable negotiation that we underwent. So, over the three years, they'll have increases, cost of living increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 1.5%. We did add a step in each year. That was after an analysis with local school districts, food service programs. We did try to bring some equity to issues around bereavement leave in comparison to other bargaining groups, and also added a sick bank in there as well. And then the final thing that we did was really to look to incentivize some of the training that's required to make sure that they get it done on time, serve safe, and some other requirements per USDA. So, it was a smooth process, I think. Dr. Lozé and Mrs. Worsbicky, as well as Mrs. Fancy, Mrs. King, and Mrs. Comalatic, who represented the food service. So it is my recommendation that you approve the contract as written.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the cafeteria workers' contract for the 2019, 2020, 2021, and 21, 22 school years.
Second.
Any discussion? No. I'd just like to thank you for negotiating. And if you would also thank the cafeteria workers for their good faith bargaining. It's always nice to have a nice, smooth session like that. And everyone gets a little something, so that's, that's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item, as shared with you, and to our dismay, Dr. Lozé is retiring at the conclusion of this year. So, we wanted to take this opportunity. She and I reviewed through the current job description, and it made some changes to it to more closely reflect the work that Dr. Lozé has done, the exemplary work that she's done. So it is my recommendation that you approve that as noted.
I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the updated job description for the assistant superintendent position as presented.
Does that a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We don't want you to vote.
They choose to fill.
We could've slipped something in that maybe only you could do it.
Well, thank you for working on that. If anyone knows what's required, it would be you. So, appreciate you as a full parting gift to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we now move on to unfinished business.
Thank you. So, as for our discussion at the last committee meeting, I did gather some data for you. Namely, I put together a draft survey to collect information from stakeholders regarding, as you contemplate the school calendar for next school year. I also included for you, as requested, the absenteeism rates for February 20th, 21st, and 22nd, days when, if we were on a typical February break schedule, what that would have, what it actually was like for attendance. And then we compared, just with three random dates in January and February, just for you to see what comparisons might look like. And then also, we included in your packet a summary, I think it's in here, I'm just not in the right spot, of the different local school districts and their... Okay. Okay. The, so it was emailed to you. If you needed a copy, I can...
I tried to enlarge it, and I couldn't. So I'd appreciate a copy I could read.
Okay.
Because I magnify the last sound.
Okay, we can get that updated for you. So really, to look at neighboring school districts, I think I looked at eight in total, if I recall, and compared, I mean, all school districts in Massachusetts must go to school, the students have 80 days. But what the data showed was there was variability from whether it was, I think probably a low of 182 or 183 days to 185, which our contract calls for. Also noted in there is, I looked to see, so were there any districts, like, how many had PD days during the school year? We had added, it was Dr. McCrillis's request, the number of half-days that neighboring districts had. And those ranged, I believe, from four to a high, excuse me, there was one, Worcester does not have half-days of school for PD. Most have it for the day before Thanksgiving. We didn't count that one. A low of zero in Worcester. But other than them, it ranged from four up to, I think, 10, which might have been the case in Westboro. And also noted, the others that don't have the traditional February break, which is Quavoag, Southern Worcester County Collaborative, Sutton, and Auburn currently. And I think that was the information that was asked. But this survey that I had put together very closely mirrors the survey that we did back in the 14, 15, and 15, 16 school years. What I did add in here, and again, this is gonna be dependent on when you'd like it to go out, because this is the first year, this school year, when we've put in to have Monday, March 18th off, making a long weekend in March. That in response to comments from staff and, and parents even, I would say more anecdotally from parents, that March is a really long month and not one that we, the only month of the year where there isn't a built-in break for staff and students. So I added that in. But we won't be able to ask that question unless you wanna send the survey after the 18th. So that's gonna be up for you to decide. So I open it up to you. If you have any other questions for me at all, or hopefully I provided what you were seeking.
Through the chair, I actually have a question specific to Auburn High School's policy of college tour days. Only because, as you can see, their absenteeism seems to be higher on those three days in February than any of the other schools. And just having friends whose kids are out, a lot of them did a lot of college tours. Do Auburn High School kids have a certain number of days that they're allowed to take, to do those? Or how do we, how does our school policy deal with that for them?
So they, they are allowed to take college tours. They just need to notify the school? What I don't know in this data, if that includes any of that?
Okay. Because I think, Aaron might have an opinion, if that is something that was causing kind of an outlier in the rest of these numbers, if, I know we had talked about the fact that the other schools had fun activities during that week. It was a different week than just back to business as usual. Perhaps those are used, at least for the upperclassmen, at college tour days, if they want to. 'Cause I know that a lot of other universities specifically have events during that week, 'cause they know all the other kids in the state will be at that.
Right.
Just at all.
So through the chair, I could certainly check on that, but I don't, it's a good point. I don't know.
Through the chair, and, you know, not teaching at the lower high school or below levels. I know the rates in February seem much higher for absenteeism. And I'm sure Mrs. Holliday, Mr. Scobie, or any of you could tell, how big of an impact does that make in the classroom, having kids missing stuff? Especially with things like, I mean, I'm not, I'm sure they didn't do a lot of standardized testing on February vacation week, but does it affect the milieu of the classroom to have the higher absentee rates in February?
Well, sometimes it did. Does it make you rethink your plans if you were gonna have a lot of people absent? I mean, it was just kind of pointless to do it with everyone absent, and you'd have to redo it. So it was just to, you know, reroute your curriculum a little bit. And I have a question on that half-day. Was that the Friday, January 18th? Was that, that was right before the Martin Luther King weekend?
Through the chair, yes, it was.
Now, was it typical that when we have a half-a-day for a long weekend, that a lot of students, or these percentages at least, don't come? Cause that seemed kinda high to me, that, that whole Friday, January eighteenth.
So through the chair, I, I think that this is probably the only one we have in the school calendar that is adjacent to a long weekend, like a, a long weekend off that I can recall, at least in this school year's calendar. It, it really varies, um, I could go back and look to see, I think in the years past, we may have had, but our half-day, um, rates, it varies by, by school, quite honestly. I mean, I could get that data for you, but this could have been somewhat impacted because of Martin Luther King on Monday. It could be.
That's a good thing.
Through the chair, I know anecdotally, from what I'm hearing, and I don't have rates or anything, that, particularly on half-days, with the younger kids, parents sometimes have a lot more difficulty with, um, pickup and all of that. Um, and I do know of a few that have kept their kids home simply because of transportation or whatnot.
So they were in one place as opposed to?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, cause the younger grades are higher than the older grades on that day.
Is everyone satisfied with the, the survey? Everyone's had an opportunity to look at it?
The question was, yeah, same.
Yeah, I would think we're doing it after that March date would be probably a good move.
I agree.
And we could get the data back and, um, vote on the calendar for the early April meeting?
Okay.
Is that the way that would work?
Through the chair, yes, we would, um, by sending this out, we'd send it out probably on the twentieth or so of March, give everyone a day to get back. We would be able to give them a, a relatively short window, which works just as well, uh, for people to send out the survey. We'd be able to have it compiled and bring it to you for the April third meeting, which is the next one we would have.
Sure.
Yes.
That would be great.
Yeah, I think that'll work out.
Okay.
Shouldn't be any later than, than the next, um, April meeting, right?
I know some of the preschool in town are almost, are also waiting for their next year's calendar to see what ours is, so.
It's surprising how many people look to the calendars now, yeah. It's, it really is.
Through the chair, we had, I'm sure, inquiries already, inquiries already. Typically, we start to get them in about February to know when next year's calendar, so.
Wow.
Yeah, Town Hall mentioned they're waiting too.
Oh, are they too? Oh, wow.
Why, how would I know that?
Excellent.
I would, I would definitely.
I'm glad they have, I'm glad they're all very patient.
I have a question, though, through the chair. Um, for next year, that fed the March weekend, that would still be a long weekend. That Monday would be up in the air, but the Friday would still be a PD day, is that?
So through the chair, that's what we have typically done over the years. There was one year, I think it might have been last year, we did it on a Monday instead. So, but the intention would be to make it be a long, be a long weekend.
A four-day weekend instead of a.
Right.
So I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jesse.
Um, I'll say, that was all of it.
Okay.
But to that, to that point, perhaps we should note in this question then, you know, bearing in mind that you also have Friday, cause I think if people say, oh, we're gonna take away three days in February, we'll only get one day off back in March, so it just might be worth.
Ask him whether, like a Friday or Monday?
Well, no, just noting, so in the question, it just states that we're not gonna have any school on Monday, March eighteenth, but it doesn't note that the previous Friday will also be a teacher workday. So that the kids will actually eat a four-day weekend.
I think it's a half-day on Friday, or is it a full PD?
Through the chair, it's full.
Oh, it's a full.
Fully, yes.
Or, I mean, whatever we decided, I think it would be helpful to put the whole thing in the question.
Um, are we looking to vote on this, or are we just gonna move the story?
So through the chair, yes, I, I note that we didn't put a recommended motion, um, so I do think it would require, I'd like your support in a vote. And the other thing too, is I know there was some discussion at the last meeting. My understanding is we would send it to all parents and all staff. What did we decide on students? Did you want it to go to high school students or not?
We could certainly, um, send a separate, separate one to the high school students,
Okay.
which could go directly through, well, obviously you could decide where it's going through, but I would say through their own principal,
Right, okay.
whoever's in charge of data.
Okay.
Cause in a sense, their parents could be voting for them anyhow, but this way, if you have a separate student input.
That way they also can't click the wrong thing.
If the parents are like me, they voted for the parents.
Now, are these the amount of pre-PD days we have every year? This looks like five, three full and five and a half, is that the usual number?
Yes, so the Auburn Teachers Contract calls for a hundred eighty-five day year. Day before school starts, day after school ends, and then three PD days. Different years, either all three have been sprinkled throughout the year, or what's happened in the past several years is we put one before the students come in, along with the preschool day, pre-start-of-school day, one in October and November, and one in March, is what we've been doing.
So that's pretty much the same every year?
It is pretty standard, yes.
Okay.
It is.
And how about the half-days, through the chair, is that standard as well?
So those actually, those have varied over the years, the number that we've had. In most recent years, at least the past two or three anyway, um, we've added those half-days, really in response to giving teachers and staff more time to work on initiatives throughout the year, but not have them to be, um, be full days. And, you know, I, I know that we had, um, discussed last time, uh, Worcester's, um, calendar. I mean, one of the things of note is teachers started on August twenty-third in the Worcester Public Schools, whereas in Auburn and in many other schools, some started on the thirtieth, but we started the twenty-seventh. And the teachers' contract requires that if school starts the Monday before Labor Day, that's the earliest it can be, and there must be no school on Friday, so there's limitations. It's, you know, as I looked here, everyone fulfills the requirement of a hundred eighty days, but everyone does it in a slightly different version, slightly different way.
Okay. Yes.
Sorry, through the chair, I have one more question. So for next year, if they vote to get rid of February, or keep February vacation the way it is now, we're not inching towards getting rid of Monday and Tuesday too, are we? Are we, is the final plan, the goal, to have that whole week full of school?
Um, so through the chair, I would say, no, I don't, I don't think that, that's the intent. I don't think it's ever been the intent. I think even when we did it that first year, I think it was a four-day weekend, I think we had Monday, Tuesday. Over the years, it's varied. One year, we did it where we had the Friday off, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, not even been Tuesday. And, and that was in response to AEA saying, well, the Friday really didn't work as much. Some people loved it, cause it allowed them to get out of town before everybody else was leaving. But those who had children, it was challenging for us. So, um, I think that, I think what you're doing is collecting data for you then to consider what makes sense. Cause I think it's possible that depending on the group that responds, they could have different responses to this, you know? But, um, no, I, I don't think the intention is, I personally think, when I look at the calendar in total, in the one that was presented and brought to you, I think it makes sense for everybody to have a long weekend. If we could do it once a month, and quite honestly, that's the way it works out, between Labor Day, which is when we just get started, we have Columbus Day, we have Veterans Day, then there's Thanksgiving, we've got the, the December break, Martin Luther King, the long weekend in February with President's Day. Now adding in March, I think makes sense, cause that's really the month that I have found, just, you know, myself and in hearing people, that if there's no break whatsoever, it's just a long, it's a long month. Um, and then of course in April, we have Patriots Day and the April Vacation, there's Memorial Day, and then, you know, school's out. So, we had a principals' meeting earlier today, and as of this Friday, five weeks from this Friday, it's April Vacation. So I mean, in, in two weeks, it's the one weekend in March. So I mean, I think giving everyone a break, just like similar to we did the no-homework weekends. You don't do it every weekend, but doing it four times over the course of a year, it's just a time for people to kinda catch their breath and say, good, relax a little bit, you know, so. But no, the intention, from my perspective, is not to get rid of a break.
Okay. All right, yeah. Do you feel, in your honest opinion, that we're opening up Pandora's Box by administering this survey? I mean, I don't wanna pit staff against parents in, you know, that whole dynamic.
So I think, you know, through the chair, quite honestly, I, I think data's good. I think anytime we get it, we, we need to give it, you know, careful consideration. What I can tell you is the last time we did this, the parents, it was about eighty to eighty-one percent said, please leave the February break as an abbreviated break. The staff at that time, it was about fifty-fifty, so it might have been forty-eight, fifty-two, or forty-nine, fifty-one, said, half basically said, leave it abbreviated, the other half said, return it to the full. So I think, you know, and people's opinions kinda change too. I have no doubt, I mean, I think everyone welcomed the snow day on Monday. You know, I mean, it was one that, but that's something we, we don't have control over. So, I, I think, I think it'll be interesting to see, I think we're gonna have to wait and see, but I suspect the, those differences, while they may change a little bit, I don't think they're gonna change all that much from the data we had several years ago.
Through the chair, in my re- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, in my research, Desi, is, are they still recommending a March break versus the February and April? I know that was like from a few years ago, but.
Yeah, so, um, through the chair, the, um.
Oh, one instead of two?
That's what, when I was researching this week, that's what I saw.
So the previous commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell Chester, this was in response, if you remember, we had, uh, in two thousand eight, was the ice storm that devastated communities. And that one, there wasn't a, a real strong reaction to, but it was another storm, actually, that had impacted the eastern cities, far greater than central and western Mass. So they had come up with the rule at that time that, um, you still have to do the hundred eighty days, but if you have days that you need to cancel after April first, you don't have to necessarily make those up. But anything before, you do have to make up. And Commissioner Chester had come out with, um, a memo stating, asking every superintendent to be creative in your scheduling. So whether you, you know, consider starting before Labor Day instead of after, that some communities still do, whether you might consider eliminating February and April, because those have just been what's always has been, and go to a March break. So really asking superintendents to do things to make sure their kids are in school and getting their hundred eighty days, so they're not so late in June. I mean, there have been years, and it's not impacted Auburn because of this change, where some communities, they're right up against the June thirtieth end date, you know, which is a long time. Some schools have had to add, you know, Saturday sessions if they've missed, you know, too many days of them, so.
Hours at the end of the day.
Exactly.
Cause Massachusetts doesn't allow for like, I think in New Hampshire, there's no packets for snow days, that's not allowed in Massachusetts.
It's, through the chair, it's just starting with what are called blizzard bags, um, but what districts, and, and there are some districts that are, are starting to try them. One of the things that we've done in, in talking, you know, just very briefly about it, is how do you accommodate for students with special needs? Because we have an obligation to do that. And if we miss services, then they're entitled to compensatory services, and how do we provide those services? So it opens up a lot of challenges, but I will say there are a couple of districts that are trying it. And, and we're looking, you know, of course, there's only been one snow day this year for most districts.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was, I thought it was, just wasn't something in math.
Yeah, no, it is something that, you know, it would have to go through school committee approval, you have to put together a whole plan, but it is just in recent years being something that's being considered.
Yes, through the chair, Mendon Upton has just instituted that. And, um, I guess they had their first blizzard bag day on Monday for some of their students.
It'd be interesting to see how that went, and especially with disabilities and things like that.
Through the chair, there's lots of us who are looking forward to that. I think Westboro was another community, um, that has decided to go that route, so they've all promised to share how things have gone.
Yeah.
Especially with online education and stuff.
Well, that's it.
I do online classes, I know it's a lot different with kids, but, yeah.
One more question, do we still, um, honor, um, Good Friday, or is that a regular school day now?
Through the chair, that's a regular school day. That actually, um, starting back in the fourteen, fifteen school year, and, um, the parents had agreed, all, not stakeholders had agreed to that. And then when we resurveyed again, asking, do they wanna see that returned? That was across the board, overwhelmed with, with both groups, not a need to. We do, through the chair, allow for staff, if it's of a religious concern, then they do take the day and they're allowed to do so.
Right, cause it made me look at Westboro's, and they're still, they got three of them that they have. They seem to be the only district that lists those days off.
Any other comments or questions? I would entertain a motion to accept the survey.
I'll make a motion to accept the survey.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Hi, this is a vote.
Thank you. So included in your packet, uh, we had outreach, as for the last discussion I had shared with you, about the master plan to look at, um, getting an enrollment projection. And I had Mrs. Otter outreach, I know that NSDEC does it, uh, to outreach MASC, to see if they do it, and they actually encouraged us to go through NSDEC as they do that job. So the cost to do so was one thousand eight hundred seven dollars. And they would do a ten-year projection for us, so I bring it to you for your consideration. And if approved, we will move forward and get that information started.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve spending eighteen hundred and seven dollars for an enroll, enrollment projection for the Auburn Public Schools from NASD.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, that seems like good information to have, so we can plan things.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, this is a vote.
So included in your packet, I believe, is the letter of invitation to town meeting members. Uh, I don't know that it's in there, but I can, we can have a copy emailed to you, to town meeting members, that we send them annually, inviting them to the public hearing that will be held on April third. As indicated, the, um, high school is not available due to Tech Week for the play or musical Chicago. So, um, with the small audience, I think it'll just, maybe just as easy to hold it here. They've got, um, filming equipment available, so just wanted to let you know that that letter will be going out tomorrow.
Okay. And now set the usual, um, seven o'clock time?
Yes, through the chair, yes. And then finally, the Town of Auburn Citizens Academy. Uh, initially, there was a question whether it was going to run, because I did not have ample participants, but they do have eleven who are participating now. So we included in here the schedule of events that will take place, with the school department being hydrated on April twenty-fifth. And, uh, we focus, as we did last year, on the middle school and high school.
Any comments? Seeing none, we now move on to new business.
So just wanted to update you, the MSBA story of a building, there are actually, members of MSBA and others are coming out to be with us this Friday, and we'll be presenting that program on May first, so we'll keep you updated.
Okay.
And then finally, in terms of, uh, upcoming events, the chorus concert that took place last night was exceptional as always. The All-Town Band Concert, and this is a testament to the incredible program that we have in place, will actually be held in the gym, because there are just so many students participating, and therefore so many parents, families, and grandparents who wanna come, so we're excited to do it there, um, tomorrow evening, so we look forward to that.
Wow. And we now move on to teaching and learning. Jose.
A few quick updates. As you know, about two years ago, the district was awarded a youth opioid prevention grant, and it was in collaboration with the town manager, the police, fire, and the board of health, as well as the schools. So we're currently in our final phase of that grant, which is putting in a piece that will address families and educating families together with their teens. So we were fortunate on this past Friday to have a trainer from Montreal come in and train our four counselors and two school psychs in the Strengthening Families Program. It's a research-based program, and it's based on teens and parents attending together for fourteen sessions. And there would be a trainer that would work with the teens, a trainer that would work with the parents, and then at the end, they would come together for a wrap-up and a homework assignment to bring back for the next time. And it seems, at least in Montreal, that it's been really successful, and out west, really successful, so we're excited about it. The people that were trained were really excited about it, the curriculum's already there. There's, um, sessions around teaching both parties to listen, and then to speak, and how to speak in ice statements, statements instead of use statements. There's a lot around drug and alcohol abuse, dating and sexuality, how to manage conflict and anger. So there were really good lessons in there, and they actually had them role-play and try out some of those lessons. So it was great, so in the next few weeks, we'll get together again, and we will create some sort of implementation plan. And I would love to see us do it at least one time this year, for twenty-three.
Dr. Lozay, excuse me, what age ranges with this program before?
This is for eleven to fourteen, so it's aimed at the middle school where the grant was written for. They do have programs all the way now from, um, birth, believe it or not, up through eighteen-year-olds. So we're gonna look into maybe the one that's a little lower, um, than the middle school, so Swanson Road, because the counselors, they were really excited and wanna get started. So we'll look at some of those others, but they said that the training in this particular one would cover them for all the programs, so. Seems like a, a great, um, addition to our program, so we're happy. ESPTERT, which some of you will remember, is survey, brief interview, referral for treatment, is a screening tool that we use to try to identify students that are engaging in high-risk behaviors. So we administered it at the Auburn Middle School to our grade eight students the week of January twenty-second, and the results were very positive overall. You go through the survey, at the end of the survey, eleven students needed to go to the brief interview. After the brief interview, only two students needed to be referred to our school psychologists, who then made a determination that no outside referrals were necessary, which was reassuring to us. We find it to be a really proactive way to provide some immediate interventions to students who might come up as being at risk. And the high school will administer it to grade nine on April thirtieth, and we hope the results are similar. Project Lead the Way, if you might have heard a little bit about this, we actually received three grants, one at Swanson Road, one for Bryn Mawr, and one for Packer Chalk, totaling twenty-five thousand dollars. There were only fifty-eight schools in the entire Commonwealth that received this, so we're really very excited about it. This curriculum provides like hands-on, project-based learning in computer science, in engineering, and biomedical. So these are wonderful opportunities for our kids. We will receive the curriculum, but in addition to that, the funds can be used to purchase materials and equipment, and it's also going to help us provide some professional development to our teachers. I have to say kudos to the Sarah Cannell from Swanson, and Miss Carrie LaBretton from Bryn Mawr and Pack, who've really spent time investigating this, attending meetings, finally writing the grant, and we're really excited that they received it, so kudos to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Through the chair, Ms. Cannell should be a professional grant writer. You're like, we hear about her grants every week, that's great.
We have our annual March menu of professional development coming on March fifteenth, which is only a week away, so it's a little stressful. I think I gave a copy in your packet of the menu. We're most excited about our keynote speaker, who's coming, Liv, who is only eleven years old. Her presentation is called Keep Reading, Keep Thinking. She had recently presented at MasQ, which is a highly regarded technology conference, and we had lots of people that attended that, and they came back, and she had just endeared the whole crowd and had a really strong message, so. We're happy to welcome her to Auburn. Some of our other offerings this year, our archery, a large group of people have signed up to view and discuss the video of the bad kids. We have mentor training, understanding charm in the classroom, productive struggle in the mathematics classroom, mindfulness is always popular, and adoption and foster care awareness in the classroom, those are just a few of them. You'll see as you look through it, there are many others as well. And then this year, we did make a slight adjustment to the day, as we have an entire day of offerings. This year, we decided to have the offerings in the morning, and then in the afternoon, to offer two general sessions, one for the staff for grades K to two, and one for the staff's three-to-twelve-year-olds. Um, and in that way, we think we can address some of the social emotional learning that we've talked a lot about, so we have speakers coming in to kinda give an overview of that, the, the neurobiology of behavior is one of them. So I think that those would be welcome also, so. It's like a great day, and I can get back to you after it, and put about our evaluations and how it went.
That sounds great.
And then just finally, in your packet, there is a listing of textbooks that I'd like your approval to have discarded. They are really very outdated, social studies books.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, discarding, uh, the list provided by Dr. Lozay, by surplus.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, this is a vote. I have one question, Dr. Lozay. Is there any allotted, um, common planning time for, for staff on any of the professional days, or is it just all, um, speakers or?
So on this particular, yep, through the chair, so this particular, on this particular day, it's just them attending workshops. A lot of those workshops are authored by the APAs, so it's, in that respect, I think it is the common planning and sharing of best practices. And our before-school, full-day PD, oftentimes, we allot time for them to meet by grade level and have some time together, as well as the one that falls either in October or November, they have some time. Our half-days are specifically to allow that kinda common planning time, and principals have been very creative and built it into their weekly schedules as well.
Okay, good, I know that's always a concern with us, especially when you take part in different groups and, and not necessarily, um, groups that are, or clubs that are paid stipend, but just things that people do out of goodness of their heart and for the kids, and they need to get together sometimes. We've gotten away from the common planning time a lot, there's just not a lot of opportunity to meet with your own faculty.
Absolutely.
Excellent, well, thank you for that report, and we now move on to business and financial. And we now move on to business and financial.
So included on Mrs. Lozay's behalf is a year-to-date budget report. Uh, she, Dr. Lozay and I review it regularly and feel comfortable that we remain in good shape. Um, she did include some transfers for you that I do ask for your approval to move forward with. This to really try and make sure that all of our lines are funded as they need to be.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as provided by, by, um, Dr. Cannell.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote.
And then, um, finally, just as a reminder, that bus applications are due on June first. They went out again today, uh, as part of the email notification, and a hard copy will come with report cards on March fourteenth.
Excellent, this is gonna be the year when they're all on time.
That'd be nice.
And we need executive session?
We do not.
We do not, okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote, goodnight, everyone.